Say one?
Yes.
We're good, okay. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the special board of selectmen meeting for Tuesday, November 12th, 2019. Please rise, join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. One order of business, I'm gonna make a slight change. I'd like to hear a motion for approval of minutes of the regular meeting of October 15th.
I'll take it.
All right. Any changes, corrections? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, that carries. Before we get to item number one, discussing with my colleagues, this is a special meeting, public input is not on the agenda, but in the interest of...
Harmony.
Harmony?
Yeah.
Oh, that's a good word. We're gonna allow a brief period of time for public input, so if you do have anything to say, please be succinct. We do have to vacate this room by 7:30, because there's a meeting coming in right behind it. But I'll open up the floor for comments, if there are any comments for this evening. This might be a first. Okay. Mr. Legnard.
Having read something in the paper today about the possibility of five things on the, you know, on the square, I think that's a good compromise. I agree with the ones that are going on there, should go on there.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Bill Hill, in 86 Walman Hill Road. I just want to thank Board of Selectmen for hopefully approving all the various displays. This is really very meaningful to me, having menorah displayed in my hometown that has the Hebrew name Bethel. It means a lot to me, and I know that Matthew and I have talked about this for a number of years, and I definitely want to thank over 50 people who donated 2,500 to make this real. And we're gonna have a nice Hanukkah lighting event on the 22nd, in addition to having the menorah display, so again, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further comments?
I'd just like to say how thrilled I am that you've opened it up for public comment, and thank you for that.
Welcome.
What's your address?
Brad Colts, 1 Fair Chapter.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Brad Colts, 1 Fair Chapter.
Okay. All right, any other comments? Yes?
Paula Antolini, Jacob Slane. I'd like to, I'd like to thank you too for opening up public comment, but I'd also like to know how much you interact with the public on what's happening tonight. There have been meetings, but you're presenting a lot of new information tonight, and I don't know if you're planning on making a decision tonight, but you're presenting it to the people tonight, so I'd like to see a little more interaction and finding out how the general public, meaning a lot of people, feels about what you're gonna present tonight.
How do you respond to that?
Well, I, I, yes, right, I'll go that way. So Brian?
Brian Turgeon, Long Meadow. I just want to thank you guys for opening up the public comment. I think it's great when we let the citizens speak, and the only thing I would ask this year and going forward is that we just remember the quaint charm of our New England town, and hopefully, all the displays that come in match the character and the beauty of Bethel, and enhance it rather than detract from it. So, I just want to thank you again.
Cynthia McCorkin, down 19 Elgin Avenue. I, I think it's, you know, great that you opened up for comment. I know it's a special meeting. I know that you've made a policy, so it is your decision, but I agree with Brian, we have, I have no idea what it's going to look like, nobody does. So I just hope also that it's not, you know, a distraction, that it's more keeping with the universal message.
Any other comments?
Amy Santanalo, Sixth Bud Drive.
I'm sorry, what's your name?
Amy Santanalo, Sixth Bud Drive. And I appreciate you opening up for comments as well. This is my first town meeting, and the article has prompted me to come down, and I was hoping that you would open up for comments. And like the two townsmen to my left, I do agree that we need to keep the integrity of the town square. You know, there's been a tradition in Bethel for as long as I've been here. I've been here for 47 years, so I think it's, I think we need to just make sure everything's done peacefully and nicely. I didn't, I don't agree with what was done last year, and how it's been approached, and it was a surprise to see the article in the paper. So I didn't, I would have liked to be part of the committee that brought the decisions together and how everybody was saying, and I'd like to know more information in the future about how things are going to be moving forward.
Wait a second. Donald Morris Jr., 5 Benet Drive Extension.
Meadow Drive?
5 Benet Drive Extension?
Bonnet?
Benet. I came tonight because I feel like I've been watching a dog chase a car, and now the dog has caught the car and doesn't know what to do. I want to see how you guys can work through this debacle. I know people are not optimistic about the winter test, because somehow it seems tenuous. And I want to see what you're gonna do. I want to see if you can manifest wisdom, to be honest with you.
Any other comments? Yes?
Karen Foster, 9 Burnham Wood Road.
What's your address?
9 Burnham Wood Road. I want to thank you for looking out for all citizens and making sure that our legal rights are protected, no matter what our beliefs or our thoughts, and thank you for protecting Bethel as well from future lawsuits, and by following the law and the Constitution.
Thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none, we'll move on to item number one, consideration of holiday display applications. Want to make a brief comment before we get into the nitty-gritty of it. The task of the committee that recommended the policy, that recommended, made recommendations to the board of selectmen, was to comply with the law, number one, also be inclusive, number two, and respectful of all traditions, not only the one that we have been discussing, but other traditions as well. The property in question belongs to all taxpayers of the town of Bethel. By law, they have a right to access it within the certain restrictions, within a policy that allows to anybody to use it, and the challenge that we faced was to create a policy that respected that. It's truly an all-or-none situation, and those of you who were at the meeting last June when we discussed this and formalized the policy will remember, those are the exact words I used. If we allow any display, there has to be an equal and fair opportunity for others to do the same, and that was the task that we had before us when we formalized the policy. You will recall that when we formalized the policy, in the event there was insufficient room to put up everything that people wanted to display, then there would have been, would have had to have been a lottery to determine what would go where. As we sit here tonight, I'm not going to be recommending a lottery. We have five applications, they are, and my colleagues have, have all the paperwork on it. They have been vetted, they're, they conform with the policy, insurance forms have been submitted, images have been submitted. So they are the Kresh, which is the traditional one that has been on, that was on the display, on the green last year. Mr. Hillman's menorah, and thank you for your fundraising on that. The, it's called the atheist banner, but basically it says, "Happy Holidays From Your Friendly Atheist Neighbors." That is application number three, that is also within the permitted guidelines. Then two new banners, and these are relatively small. One simply says peace, and the other one says human light. And, do you have a copy of that one? Because there's some other verbiage on it that I want to read to the, to the audience, I don't remember what it said. It says, "Happy Human Light, Reason, Compassion, Hope." And it has a symbol that looks like that. So I personally find these to be in conformance with the policy that was outlined last summer. I'm gonna make a motion that all five displays be approved. There's gonna be a second motion, because we do have to determine timeframe when they're gonna go up, and some other things related to that. But the first motion that I would like to put on the floor is that these five displays be allowed on the green. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Floor is open for discussion?
Okay, I'll start out. All of you know that I really supported it, the entire thing here. To those who said, you know, you questioned whether or not we want to do the right thing. The right thing has been always the right thing for Bethel, as far as I'm concerned. It's been a tradition, and it's something that I do not want to change. As long as I've been here in Bethel for approximately 43 years, 1976, I moved in, that Kresh was there. The new additions, they're fine, they're in good taste, and that's what it's all about, good taste. It's representing the people, it has a good message, and if there be anything foul there, believe me, I'll be the first one to raise my hand and say, "It's out." And the other issue that I'd just like to have people understand, it's my personal opinion, the Board of Selectmen are the people that determine what goes on public land, okay? And I stand by that pretty solidly. So, you know, I honestly think, this is good. This is gonna bring the community together more so, probably, so this is my position. If it's in good taste, fine, and we're there.
Tim?
I was opposed to the original proposal of having the displays on the green. I voted against the motion at the board of selectmen's meeting, and I'm a native of the town, so I've been here 72 years, and around the 40-year mark is when the Kresh went on that green there. I remember it well, because my dad used to decorate the tree for the town. I'm gonna vote no against the motion, just because of, I was against the original motion, and I have to follow through with my reasons for the original motions. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, I'll try your minds. We have a motion on the floor to approve the five display applications that are currently before us. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and those opposed?
Aye.
Okay. That motion carries on a two-to-one margin, and I thank, I thank you for your, for your involvement, both of you. These are not easy things to tackle, and I appreciate the care and thought that has gone into them. Okay, the second thing has to do with the timeframe, and here's the dilemma. I, I'm not gonna put a motion on the floor just yet, but I, I will tell you what my recommendation is. The tradition is to do the tree lighting at the green on the Friday after Thanksgiving, so, which this year would be Friday, the 29th. The park and rec department has requested that if the tree lighting ceremony and festivities are going to occur at that time, as they have in the past, that the holiday displays not be permitted to go up until the following morning, and this is strictly for safety. Because, in fact, the selectmen, I will tell the audience, the selectmen have been, getting concerned about safety for the last few years, ever since Mr. Cravis, our former board chair, was hit by a car. We have, Santa arrives on a fire truck, the square is crowded with hundreds of children and other holiday revelers, and park and rec is worried about people, just not enough room for everything that goes on there. So I'm gonna, before I make a motion, I'm gonna toss that off for your consideration, because Rich had long considered, in fact, I think he mentioned it, three or four years ago, moving the tree lighting with a temporary tree to the front lawn, and having Santa, the front lawn of this building, and then having Santa come inside. And I believe the Chamber of Commerce is gonna have Santa inside anyway, this year. So what is your, do you have any thoughts on that, before we, before we proceed?
Well, I think if we move the tree lighting to the municipal center, and Santa Claus is gonna be inside, that they could put up their displays, so people could see their displays...
You put them up earlier, though?
Earlier, so that they can see them while they're downtown.
Okay.
But as I expressed in the past, I've been out there with the, when the fire truck comes down the side street there, and people with strollers and little children out in the road, I really feel that someone's gonna get hurt there anytime soon. I think that with, School Street could be closed off, Santa Claus comes down the fire truck, it could be a walkway, people can walk down School Street to the municipal center for the tree lighting. I'd like to see it moved.
Okay. Do you have any thoughts on that?
Tradition again comes under my hat.
It does, it does.
From what I understand now, and I got Brad Colts here, I believe, Brad, in Chamber of Commerce, you've already planned to have everything centered around P.T. Barnum Square, correct?
I can only speak to the plans up until my departure from the Chamber about a week and a half ago. I have no longer presence in the Chamber.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't know that.
That's all right. I can tell you what the plan was, but I would recommend, and I can, after I can give you who you might want to speak with about that.
Well, I spoke with Pat today, if you'd rather have me...
If you have, she may have changed.
Yeah, get you off the hook on that.
Yeah.
I did speak with the, one of the officers of the Board of the Directors, Board of Directors for the Chamber. Their plan was to continue with the tree lighting at P.T. Barnum. They do have a food vendor, I think a soup, you know, there'll be, there'll be things being distributed, there'll be the high school choir, there'll be a booth set up for the DJ. So again, it's...
At P.T.
Barnum. At P.T. Barnum. So their plan right now is to continue with that tradition of doing the tree lighting at P.T. Barnum. And I, so if we were gonna do a tree lighting elsewhere, it would, you know, there's a lot of things that would have to occur, you know, Rich and I were talking about that earlier. You'd have to get a tree, you know, lighten, find money to put lights on it, and that's not something that we have, you know, discretionary budget to do right now. So I, I think that longer term, that's, that's the best way to go, is to get people out of the square and put them onto the lawn, where you can more easily block off School Street, and then it's a much safer environment for, for kids. But I, we have, we have a short period of time, I'm not sure that they can do that, but I can't speak in the Chamber either, that would be entirely up to them.
I can't tell you what happened last year.
What's that?
After the lighting, Santa moved to the municipal building.
Yeah.
Went inside to the general purpose room, and that's where all the kids and families came. There was nothing but positive feedback about that part of the room, so.
So you're saying Santa's gonna be over here in...
He's gonna be in this building.
In this building.
Yeah.
And the choirs and all that will be on P.T. Barnum.
That's their plan right now, and, you know, to Rich's point earlier, we could ask them to reconsider that, and to move it to the, to the front lawn.
But, what did Pat, what did Pat, Rich say?
Well, that, I didn't ask her if it would, I didn't ask her to move, I just asked, I said, "What are your plans?" So we might have to make a motion that gives them the flexibility, say, "If, if you can move it, then we'll..."
Fine.
Okay.
I'll go with the flexibility.
Okay. All right, then I'm gonna put a motion on the floor. It's gonna be a two-part motion, a move to permit the displays beginning, hold on a second. Whatever, what's the, what's the date of the week before Thanksgiving?
The week of the 17th.
The week of the 18th, Monday, the 18th.
Thanksgiving is the 28th.
I think it's the 24th.
Okay. All right, yeah, you're right.
23rd, 24th.
The 20th, the 25th, wait, the 25th, okay. Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion, let me start over. I'm gonna make a motion that this, that the displays be permitted from Saturday, the 30th, from the morning of Saturday, the 30th of November, unless the Chamber of Commerce is able to move the tree lighting ceremony to the front lawn, in which case we, the displays could be permitted anytime after the 25th of November. Yes?
You're talking about all the displays, with the exception of the United Methodist Church's display?
With the exception of?
Well, isn't that the United Methodist Church for the Kresh?
Yes.
Okay. Don't say that in your motion.
No, no. You said all.
All, all, all five.
Well, how are they gonna, how are they gonna celebrate on Friday, the 29th, then? If they can tell them that they can.
They, they wouldn't be able to if, if all that, they wouldn't be, we wouldn't, the park and rec department has asked that we keep the, the area open...
Right.
For all of the, the tree lighting ceremony, with all the festivities that go on there for safety reasons. So they're asking that none of those displays be placed until Saturday morning.
And that includes the Kresh?
Yes, that includes the Kresh.
Okay.
Now, if, if we can work with the Chamber to move the tree lighting, say, to the gazebo, then that wouldn't be necessary. That's, is that motion, did I state that well enough?
I'd be opposed to that one.
Okay. All right, well, how, how do you think we can solve that, then?
The tree, the tree, right now, it's too soon to change things that rapidly here in town. I would prefer to see the tree lighting in P.T. Barnum Square.
Okay.
If you want to do it next year, fine, at least you could plan ahead, and the community will know this. Here, here we are, roughly two and a half or three weeks away. It just rubs me the wrong way.
Okay.
I just would like to leave it as is, including the displays, then.
Okay, so you, so even though, even though park and rec has raised this concern about safety?
Well, yes. I think if we get the police department just to block off P.T. Barnum completely, I know they have, I know there's overflow, but I just don't like the idea of scrapping a tradition so rapidly.
Okay. All right, you want to make a motion?
Leave it as is.
Okay, so, displays would be permitted to go up...
Yep.
The week, the week before Thanksgiving?
Yep.
After, after the 25th, correct? Okay.
I'll second it, just a second.
Okay. Further comments?
I disagree. I'll call no.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor to permit it, all right.
You, you have the possibility of the displays being damaged with that crowd of people there.
That's also true. Well, I'm gonna support the motion with reservations, and I'm gonna discuss with the park and rec department to see what safety measures can be taken to, to get through this one, and then I do believe that we have to make a more substantial change next year, so. Those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. That, that concludes item number one.
Can I do a point of information on that, if we'd like it?
No, no.
No discussion.
No.
No, not discussion, I just have a point of information.
Let's do the, we've, we've got a tight time to, see me after.
Yes, this is important.
See me, see me, see me after, please.
No, no, this is important. I'd like you to identify who the groups are that are the other two secular...
I will give that to you afterwards, we're not gonna do it now.
No, I would like everybody to know.
They can find it out later, I'm not gonna...
And also, um...
I'm not gonna do it now, Paula.
Okay, I have a second point. And also, one-third of the property was supposed to be for the displays, so I...
Paula, that, we are, we have no discussion, debate, or public input.
I'm asking for a point of order, but I have to...
There's no point of order. I'm gonna move on to item number two.
You're not gonna give us the names of the organizations?
No, no, I am not, and we are going to move on with this agenda, we have a tight schedule.
You don't think the public deserves...
Paula, one, we're gonna recess this and ask you to leave if you don't stop. Thank you. Item number two, consideration of approval of Bethel Police Department request for Motorola portable radios. If you, you remember that with the capital non-recurring budget item last year, we had planned to do radios in three phases, $46,000 per year, and that came up to about $135,000 and some odd dollars. However, if we, if we purchase them off the state bid in one, one group, the new price on that is $105,000. To be exact, let me see if I can find that. Oh, there we are. $105,175. So I'd like to make a motion that we approve purchase of the 50 radios as specified in the state bid. We do have a, there was another bid from a separate company that's significantly more, that I'll give you for your, for your reference. $105,000, $175,000 to be applied to the current capital non-recurring budget, and sent to the Board of Finance for their consideration. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion?
The money's there, right.
What's that?
The money is there.
Yes.
And, and by combining it, we're saving a significant amount of money.
Yeah, like $25,000 more. Yeah, the...
Thirty, almost thirty, hopefully.
The unreserved availability in capital non-recurring right now is $478,000 and some odd, so, see if I can get that. All right, any other questions?
No.
This will, this was, this was placed on the Board of Finance agenda too, so, which will occur at 7:30 tonight, so we'll move that forward. So those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, that carries. Consideration, item number three, consideration of appropriation of fund balance for previously approved capital expenditures. This is a little bit, this requires a little bit of explanation. In previous town meetings, during the budget process, some items have been approved for, for purchase, and if you remember, item number four on the, in the annual town budget meeting is when the town attorney reads about a four-page implementer that says, "Funds can come from bonds, bond anticipation notes, et cetera, et cetera." One of the things that that implementer does not say, does not give the Board of Finance the right to do, is to take from fund balance if they deem that to be a prudent and appropriate thing to do. So what we have to do, literally, is ask, make a, make a motion to approve, to allow the Board of Finance to pull from fund balance on some items, and then we have to have a town meeting to approve that. So I'm going to, does that make sense?
What are we looking for specifically in terms of...
You got a list of...
Yes.
You wanna explain?
Yes, I do. This would be the, the high school boilers for $1 million, the 1920 Elgin Street Sweeper for $230,000, high school HVAC system, $250,000, Bethel Fire Department engine number six for $660,000, capital non-recurring, the balance of it, which, you know, is yet to be approved, but this would, language would just give them the ability to pull from fund balance if they needed to, in the amount of $500,000, and remaining short-term debt pay down of $990,000. So the total is $3,630,000. So I'm gonna make a motion, move to recommend to the Board of Finance to purchase the following capital items previously approved by the annual Bethel Town Budget Meeting for the 2019, 20, 2020 fiscal year as follows. Bethel High School boilers, $1 million, street sweeper, $230,000, high school HVAC system, $250,000, Bethel Fire Department engine six, $660,000, capital non-recurring to be allocated, $500,000, remaining short-term debt pay down, $990,000. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. So Marty's here, if you have any questions.
I have a question.
Yes.
I'm not looking to rock the boat, but where is it in our agenda, because it's a special meeting? Does it talk about capital non-recurring account and remaining short debt pay down? It's not on here. All that's on here is previously approved capital expenditures.
Wouldn't those all be included?
Should have been on here. No.
You mean...
I thought we were only talking about capital expenditures, and you... I thought we were only talking about capital expenditures. And continuing non-reoccurring is not a capital expenditure. That's just a, a float, basically. And also remaining short-term pay down. That's got nothing to do with capital expenditures.
All right. Well, then I'll, uh, I'll restate that motion and just say high school boilers, street sweeper, high school HVAC, and Bethel Fire Department engine six. That removes those other two items. Got that? All right. All right, is there still a second?
Then mine, second.
Okay. All right, any, any other?
So that's for a total of one million, one hundred forty thousand.
Correct.
That's just to pay it off and we're done with it, that's right?
Yep, that's correct.
Okay.
Great, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries. And last item is consideration of establishment of a special town meeting. Uh, so we, after this goes to the board of finance, we still have to have a special town meeting. Deanne, what is, um, what's the, uh, what's the parameters?
We're going to ten days. You had mentioned something about, like, uh, the first week of December, the last week of November, which would be Thanksgiving, or the first week of December, I think. But I can tell you, well, never mind.
Um, how about?
I think we talked about the twenty-fifth. Is that it?
Yeah. Twenty-fifth or twenty-sixth?
Twenty-sixth.
Yeah. All right, I'll make a motion that we establish a special town meeting, uh, date of Tuesday, November twenty-sixth, twenty nineteen, seven PM in meeting room A to execute the, uh, execute the, uh, this, this motion.
Of one million, four, one hundred forty thousand.
Assuming, assuming that, you know, on condition that the board of finance approves it as well. Right there, two weeks from tonight.
Is that gonna leave enough time to get the notice in the paper?
If we go ahead and we get the notice done, it gives us, if I can get the notice in by Thursday, we should be good.
I'll, I'll tell you what, why don't, why don't we, why don't I, let me restate that. I'm gonna say, uh, Tues, Tuesday, December third, which is the next regular board of selectmen meeting anyway.
That's where.
No, that's Monday, that's Monday the second.
Monday.
Yeah. So, the third.
Four, three?
Yeah.
Uh, and I'll make it at six-thirty PM prior to the board of selectmen meeting. How's that? All right. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
That carries. Thank you very much. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Aye.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries. Okay.